First of all, we thank you for this, this day, Lord, we thank you for the blessings of life. We just ask you to be with us tonight because we're grateful for this peace. Our blessedness give us God's, everything, everything we do will be pleasing in your right. Jesus Christ, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I thank everyone for coming out. It's not too high. Over there is the fifth town council meeting. So, the roll call. Curtis is here. Gail is here. Wendy is here. Miss Sue is here. Tyler is here. I'm here. The Jim is here. Sherry is out at Bodine District and Rose on Zoom with, uh...
Franklin?
Franklin is on the Zoom. Yeah. So, all right. Did you hear someone, Franklin? Okay, good deal.
I'm here too.
And Mr. Warren. Oh, there he is, he's hiding over there.
I heard Frankie.
Everybody's here. That is here, so we're gonna go with that. And with that being said, if you have any votes, you should put them in. It's been properly moved to second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. Next up is the minutes from the January sixteenth Town Council meeting.
How much can make a motion to approve the minutes from January sixteenth Town Council meeting?
Second.
Without any objection, motion carries. Okay, uh, for anyone who'd like to speak tonight that is not already on our agenda, you need to fill out the speaking request form and submit it to our district clerk over here. Approach the podium, be clear to me, and state your full name and address for the record. And please, we would like for you to keep your comments to a minimum of, or maximum of three minutes, please. So, with that being said, I'll move on into the informational hours.
No, 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 we have trouble. So, we have one from Elijah, he's not here.
He's not here.
We walked down that one. Uh, I think the next one that came in was from Zach Bullock.
Zach, okay, we're gonna do those. Hi, Chris. Yes, ladies and gentlemen.
Alright, Zach Bullock. Um, running to be your next County Commissioner in District Five, over in the Williston area. I'm forty-three years old, born and raised here, sixth generation of the county. Got kids that go to school in Williston, I'm invested in this community. Um, I currently also serve in the Williston City Council, so I appreciate what all y'all do. I know, I know what that life is like. Um, seeing County Commissioners is an opportunity for me to serve on a greater scale. And so, uh, that's why I'm running, is to, uh, to serve the people. Um, and I say to everybody, if I've got any questions, just wanted to introduce myself.
Zach? Yes. Appreciate you, and appreciate what you're doing for Williston, because, uh, it's, it's tough, y'all.
It is, it is.
Uh, and I wish you all the good.
Thank you.
Any support I get from anybody, I greatly appreciate. I now gotta go pick the ten-year-old, cook dinner, and get her ready for school tomorrow, so...
Thank y'all.
Y'all have a very good one. Alright, we have anybody else that was not on the table?
Yep, they have been at that.
Do I have to speed that?
Do you wanna wait until the end, or do you wanna wait until that portion of the meeting?
Yeah, I want, yeah, I would like to wait until that portion of the meeting.
Oh.
Yeah, it's at the very end.
No, no, it's not.
It's not?
You're talking about Far Chief, right?
Yeah.
No, that's coming up soon.
Oh, that's coming up. Yeah, okay. Come on, alright. Alright, informational hours. Our town hall will be closed on February the nineteenth for the President's Day. We will be open the next day. Our next Town Council meeting is the next day, on Tuesday, the twenty-first, at six P.M., here. The Walk Assessor Water and Waste Water Cooporate Board meeting is Wednesday, the twenty-first, and that will also be here, so we're gonna be busy here for a few days. Anybody on the council that wishes to come, of course, that hasn't been advertised, but you are welcome to come. Uh, Bread for the Mighty Food Bank Mobile Food Drive is Friday, February the twenty-third, I said nine-thirty, at the, at the park, Town Park. And the Bronson FSA Alumni Night Twenty-First Annual Food Fest is Friday, the twenty-third, at five-thirty P.M. Tyler, where is it? They gonna have that at the, at the church?
Just thinking your...
Mel, Mel Church.
Yeah, okay. We also have a Code Enforcement Board meeting on Wednesday, February the twenty-eighth, at five P.M., and that will also be here. And we have a presidential primary election is Tuesday, March the nineteenth.
We need to talk about that, Mary. Um, okay, so the election is the nineteenth, which is a Tuesday. We have a council meeting scheduled for Monday, the eighteenth, but they need to set up that night. We've been on the past.
Right.
So, um, I think Councilwoman Ray said, last year, we pushed our meeting, our third meeting, or second meeting of the month, on the third Monday, to the following week, if that works for everybody. Since obviously, we can't have the nineteenth either, because we're busy with the election. So, you wanna switch it from the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth?
Do you have, we just moved it to the Tuesday after the election?
Well, the election is Tuesday. You can move it to...
Right, you can't do Monday, because instead of Tuesday is the election. I believe you do whatever you want, but we just can't do either the eighteenth or the nineteenth.
Right.
The following weekend is Easter weekend, just as y'all know.
The twenty, uh, twenty-fourth, which is the thirty-third. Oh, the fall weekend.
Yeah, we're good to go, okay. Alright, so the following Monday would be customary for us.
It would be the twenty-fifth, if that's what you wanna do.
I think it was the last year, and then we just had back-to-back meetings.
Because we'll have one on the twenty-fifth, and then folks will be back-to-back.
Uh, I make a motion that we move our, what was the date, the original date?
Eighteenth.
The March eighteenth Town Council meeting to March twenty-fifth.
Yep.
Um, because of the primary election.
I second that. Without objection, motion carries. And that's March twenty-fifth. Okay, and, uh, Better Together Job Fair is Thursday, March the twenty-first, at ten A.M., and I assume that's the, that's, that's the church, correct?
Alright, there it is.
Alright, don't sit down, don't sit down. Talk quickly. Time. You bout to miss that. Time.
My question is, what's going on with my town? Where I'm coming from is, I was over in Williston, and dead there in the woods. And I've already spoken about Chieftain and Williston, even at lunch. And we are the county's seat. And I don't see where we're going, not for a building. Now, we wanna claim, we don't have no space. I don't care if we have to extend the boundaries. We should be trying to do something. Another thing I'm saying is, okay, we go to the county meetings. That's how family go. I know she goes all the time. So, we're already in bed with them, so why don't we try to...
I wish we were. I wish we were.
Uh, well, we should be, I mean, what questions are we asking? Don't we wanna grow? And when I talk to me, they never say nothing. And we're not saying nothing. I used to go. I think I'm a star back then. So, I'm not afraid to ask questions. But if you just say it, we call ourselves the county's seat, then we don't have nothing going. Period. Now, what I, a long time ago, I was told, when Bola West was here, he wanted a G.M. A G.M. was supposed to be doing these things. What is our G.M. doing? I, I don't see no proof, uh, on there. I don't see what we are doing, anything. Period. But it, and it's kinda shameful, that we're not getting nothing done. We gotta make it, we can't, but what are we gonna? Not.
Can I, can I, can I respond to that, please?
Yeah.
Alright, first of all, anything that has to do with the private sector of business coming in this community has to be done for the private sector. I can't force that law to come here. But now, I'll tell you what, if you got an extra ten million dollars in your pocket right now, they're gonna have to save you one right now.
No, no.
But, and I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm not trying to be facetious, but like, it's all about the numbers. It's all about the numbers. You got to have the numbers before... I asked a gentleman here not too long ago about why we can't, why they didn't have a convenience store or cover station in the government. Because somebody had asked me to question him about that, because I'm more in person. And he told me, it's just the numbers, it's all about the numbers. You gotta have the numbers, people coming in the community, before we can have something. We just not there yet. But we're getting there, okay? We get there. And then you just spoke about something, about expansion. We're talking about that every breath that we have. We're working on it. Sue, we got a meeting tomorrow? Tomorrow. Yes, we are working.
We got, we got all these moves. I was at the town hall this morning, paying my water bill. You called up there, I think it was something like, now, you say, what, uh, they told you, she was on a meeting?
What?
She's always in a meeting, what are we gonna? I was thinking, what are we gonna? That she's always in a meeting.
Well, I, beyond, there's a lot of things going on, okay? I'm sorry that, and, and we can't indulge everything that happens here, because if we did, we wouldn't get nothing to do just before. But there are things going on. There's more than just one thing that runs this town.
It is very easy to say, um, we need more stuff here. But when you look at the earthquake that came through here, when that store was built with Hardee's, there was a lot of people who are from here, who did not want it here, they did not want that man to build anything here. And unfortunately, you come into that conversation with anything that's gonna come here. People gonna have something to say about it, whether, whether it's good or bad, it's just, that's just how it is.
You know, it's...
We also, so that opened, that's huge in Bronson, really.
Guess why it opened? Guess why it opened? He had his own mind.
Right.
We, we didn't try to do nothing.
Right, and we also had our first Mexican restaurant that has opened in Bronson. That's also huge. We have a huge Mexican, uh, um, community here. Um, so that was, that was huge. Um, as far as her being in the meeting, though, since I have been here, I have seen paperwork that she has brought up to date that was thirty, that was thirty years old. So, when I say, the stuff that I have seen her do, I have seen her do things that were three and four people's responsibility before she got hired. So, I think that, I think that what you're asking is gonna take some more time. And with the, the estates that's being built over there on Main Street, that's gonna bring more people here. You got several things being, that's in the works here, that's gonna bring more people here.
See, another thing, uh, that's a little, I go, uh, I, I look at, what I'm looking at, what I feel, I'm looking at the council that I voted for to be in here. This new administration, I follow. They might do that without. We're not doing anything. At, at all. Uh, politics, politics is like this. Most of the time, we talk the talk and don't walk the walk. We just talk and don't do nothing. And that's wrong. And I guess I'm not to keep on voting, keep getting all the people to anticipate, in order to get the right council up here to do so.
Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff. Alright, we've been at it all along. Uh, I don't know, um...
I mean, I'm just walking back here.
If, if the shooter had anything...
Okay.
Yeah, I think, uh, that, uh, after really work hard, to get things there, and, and it's, 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 it's no such thing as lockdown, that, that's, that's a bunch of work, because it is time. I mean, if, I, ain't nobody ruthless enough to get down and get me, you know, to begin over and over again. It feels like it would...
Pick it very up, huh?
All I got to say is, we as council, we need to, we, we got up here, we expected, because the people of Bronson so love you to look out for them. And we having, uh, like, too many side shows, like, uh, what did you get played to where they, they be down there near where they go and try to jump at?
Too late?
You know, they have...
Chet, Chet, for real, I ain't gonna talk.
Get, get played?
Yeah. Way to turn.
They're parking, they're blocking the view of car, of coming from, out on the lawn. I mean, I, I think it is one of the things, but they, they need to park in a different place.
Nobody's singing now.
You can't see, you can't see, y'all gotta get in the road to see, to go across to the bank. You go over this on the way, you gotta get in the road to see, because you can't see what's coming from, 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 from the south going off. But like I say, we all as a council need to work to try to get things here, so our kids have a place to, to work at. And then, uh, we, we getting housing, even though it's a little steep, but we getting housing here. But the thing I have a feeling was, we need to, that, that we, we need to work as hard as we can to really get something here. As we, in the order that we got, to have, uh, uh, this, you, you need to put, like, this one thing, if I want thing in here about bringing revenue, we're trying to get revenue from. I, 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 I don't know, but I was saying, that's a city man is job, to get revenue here from. And that's all I can say.
That's all it was supposed to be, get revenue.
Can I help you?
Thank you. Yes, alright.
Hello.
Hello, Emily.
Uh, my name is Elizabeth. I am a volunteer firefighter for the town of Bronson, but my main job is Senior Executive Assistant to the Department of Sustainable Development for the city of Gainesville. So, that department encompasses building, planning, economic development, the city's climate chief, uh, city architect, code enforcement. So, one of my functions that I work with at the city is, uh, the annexation team, and, um, also in our development review team, I help support them. Um, so, one thing, to your point, um, there cannot be development without infrastructure, right? And Bronson has historically not had the type of business infrastructure that we need to be attractive to developers. Now, some of that is not within the council's control, right? We have been, for years, the town of Bronson has been advocating for high-speed internet, which is finally coming this way. But this will not be a business anywhere that will consider Bronson as a location without high-speed internet. So, until that happens, it's a melt point.
And a sewer.
Yeah, and a sewer. Yeah, and a sewer. Um, the second part of this is, um, one of the things that I have seen really effective, and it's a requirement by the state, I believe, is the, the city's comprehensive plan. And those work hand-in-hand with a strategic plan. So, your comprehensive plan is what is your collection of policies that enforce your strategic plan. And without a strategic plan that says, in the next ten, fifteen years, this is what the council and the community want to see in Bronson, you're kind of, you know, driving loss without a GPS, right? Like, you're, you're kind of like, oh, this, this is great, and this is great. But you really need a strategic, a strong strategic plan that says the areas of development that we wanna look at. Transportation, right? Um, infrastructure, development, you know? What, what are our priorities? And what type of development do we want to see? Because I've seen some requests in Gainesville where some large corporations come, and that's not really the type of development that we want to see here, right? We want to see development that will impact the community positively without overwhelming it. So, I would really recommend that the, the council consider, um, developing a strategic plan that's community-based and with community input that says, we as Bronson want to see these things in the next ten years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Sue?
Alright, so, first up is discussion of new fire chief. So, first and foremost, I wanna make sure they're rising on the same page about where we're at with this. So, obviously, for anybody who doesn't know, the council made an offer to Mary Ellen Harper at our last council meeting on January sixteenth, is that right? Um, which was the same day that Mary Ellen accepted the Public Information Officer position for Levy County. Several days later, she was told by the county that she needed to withdraw from our position. And, um, I'm gonna read you exactly what it says in the Levy County Employee Manual. Employees may not accept any employment relationship with any organization that does not, that does business with Levy County. This prohibition on employment includes serving as an advisor or consultant to any organization of that type unless the activity is conducted as a representative of Levy County. I'm not gonna get into the specifics, but there's been several people who have worked for the county full-time and work for other municipalities part-time, but unfortunately, Mary Ellen is, um, sort of the ball person here. So, she withdrew, um, about two weeks ago. Uh, she's now working her full-time, as of Friday, she's now working her full-time position as the Public Information Officer for Levy County. So, the question at this point before the council is, would you prefer to make an offer to the runner-up, which was Michael Davis of Wesley Chapel? Or would you like to re-post the position and start the hiring process from the beginning, all over again? But basically, that's where we're at, and that's the reason that she resigned. It was not because she didn't want to do the position, she still would really like to work for the town, but she is unable to due to this conflict that Levy County has imposed on her.
Imagine.
And that's where we're at.
Well, let's play it again.
Um, I wanted to, to ask, is it possible that we could promote the bin instead of depending on somebody from outside source to come in?
Yeah, it's entirely up to the council, of course. Do you wanna go and speak to this now?
Sure.
Hey, my name is Kenny Martin. I'm a volunteer firefighter. Um, I live here in Bronson. And, um, I just would like to tag along with, um, Ms. Phillips about, um, promoting the bin. Um, I cannot speak any high, more highly than, um, about Gail. He has shown up. He has done the job. Um, he wants to do more, but because he's in a temporary position, um, he can't really, um, make changes, per se, without things being undone if a permanent person comes in. Um, he is dedicated to, uh, our community, to, um, you know, the people that live in it. I mean, he is just a kind-hearted, uh, person that is willing to show up when nobody else will. Um, I enjoy serving under him, and I know there are several people that, um, work under him that like him and will work for him. And, uh, I also know that under leadership, sometimes, you know, not everybody agrees with who your leader is, and, um, working for them can be challenging. Um, we all have had maybe jobs where we have, uh, worked for people we didn't agree with a hundred percent, but we still respected their position and did what was, um, asked of us, you know? So, um, I would just say that I would be most, uh, agreeable with trying to promote the bin. Uh, he is well-deserving, and I know that he's gonna be out, like, during the summer, but there is coverage for that. And, um, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Tom?
Does anyone need to wait till we have a full, not just three of us here, that can make a decision?
Yes. I agree. Did you have something to say about this subject?
I mean, I, I definitely can. Um, you know, I've been asked this question before about who I thought the fire chief should be, and I always respond with, the most qualified person. I definitely feel that Gail is qualified. I think that, um, he has, you know, a clear vision forward for the, for the department, and, um, and beyond those things, he's showing up when nobody else is showing up. Beyond those things, I don't know what you can really ask for, for more out of a, a fire chief, for a volunteer station.
Thank you.
Lloyd?
Again. I have to agree with that lady. That guy stood right up there and told you, standing again, that that dog wasn't gonna hunt with you. Told you that. Go get a whistle. What I mean by that, that's, you know, what, what I mean by that, he told you that lady wasn't a snake. What I feel for the reason that she was a snake, and she's a good candidate, a great candidate, but it's the chain of command that we have up here that'll piss somebody off.
That's our leadership, huh?
And, and what I'm saying is, you, you got people who wanna say what that job is, and they don't know themselves what it entails. And, and that's wrong. And that's what happened.
Alright, thank you, Lloyd. Lloyd, repeat your references, what you think. Okay, what's your think? That's all I'm saying. You know better than... Okay. Uh, anybody else got anything to say about the fire department? Alright.
Yeah, well, I think, I think we did, you gotta be right, uh, I think we need to go ahead and promote, promote the bin, because we just, it's been what, you want, since we have a, a fire chief, and, and it's, and it's getting, we're, it's getting longer and longer, and I think we should promote the, the bin, because a lot of those people that, that's been working with divided parts, you know, they really care about Bronson, or else they wouldn't be here.
I agree. And that's what I...
That's what I thought, that, I mean, that's, that's never been a question.
That's what was on my heart. We, uh, we all respect them and the job that they're doing, and I, I agree with all the statements that you've said tonight. Uh, anytime that we went through this process, this person that we did decide on was the best, you know, in our opinion, was the best person qualified, and everybody has their own opinion. I bet she could've done a great thing. She, you know, she, she told us, brought several things to the table in just her short period of time here that, you know, that was unknown to us. So, with that being said, that's, that's where we're at the bridge, and we have to move on. Um, I would like to have a full council vote on this process, uh, here, if you're able to.
If you can, tomorrow, we can't vote over the peers.
That's right. So, we got three people voting here tonight. I, I would like this to be a full council vote. Uh, so... You have a problem? We have no problem.
It should be in a form of a motion, because it's an agenda item, so that disposes of it.
Alright, to the table, and that's...
Can I make a motion to table the new fire chief position to the next meeting?
Second. Have a motion in a second, without objection. Motion carries.
I'm going to go ahead and read these other Levy County employees that worked though for the record here, along with reading the more of the county people, my other statement. There was ten, nine of them that we came up with in about five minutes that we knew worked for the county and also volunteer. This is all just some fire stuff. Former Bronson Fire Chief, current Bronson Volunteer Firefighter, former Banning Springs Volunteer Firefighter, current Banning Springs Fire Captain, former English Fire Chief, the current English Fire Chief, current Williston Assistant Fire Chief, and then three current Williston Firefighters all work for the county and are employed with other organizations that do business with the county. So I think it's a load of bull crap, what the county did. And I'll express that tomorrow with the county.
Do all of them have something in common?
They all work for Levy County and work for another organization.
They're all Banning, that's what I'm asking you. I would say that they are all...
That's what I thought.
Let me add something else, in fact. If the actual language of the regulation that applies in the county is organization, in legal circles, I have rarely ever seen a municipality referred to as an organization. It's usually referred to as a municipality. So if the restriction is you can't work for an organization that does business with the county, it's like this, whether that includes a municipality.
There's a link to municipality in regard to...
Well, that's clear work. Just matter of interpretation.
That's right. It's, it's everybody's being interpreted. That's, that's their, then they got a figure, so to say. It's a shame that it became to that, that it is what it is. All right, moving on.
All right, appointment of Natalie Thomas to the Code Enforcement Board for a one-year term. Um, so just to remind everybody, we founded the Code Enforcement Board two years ago. She was appointed to the board, um, last time on Monday, February sixth, to a one-year term versus a continuous one-year term. And she serves as an alternate to the board. So she will come again in February of 2022.
Do you have a good point out of Thomas to the Code Enforcement Board? Just go over a one-year term?
Oh, I think you...
We have a motion in a second, without objection. Motion carries.
And next is the appointment of Kyle Durden. Um, Kyle serves as the alternate to the engineer, because we don't have an engineer anymore. Um, he was appointed Monday, February seventh of 2022 to a two-year term, and he serves as the vice chair. Um, he's been as the chair of the Code Enforcement Board.
Make a motion to appoint Kyle Durden to the Code Enforcement Board for a two-year term?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, without objection. Motion carries.
All right. Next up is our professional services contract with building local communities regarding our land development regulations. Um, I'm going to give the council just a little, before we get into the actual presentation, a little synopsis here. So Jean and I have been working together for probably about a year now, I'd say, about a year, off and on.
Close.
Um, he was referred to me by Kathy Wiegoff, J.D. Pro, who was here last time from Aloma Estates. He's helped us with, I don't know who he was, but Aloma Estates. He helped us with the RV park last summer. Um, and basically, he's looking to help us update our land development regulations, which, like Counselor Phillips said earlier, there's a lot of things in Bronson that haven't been updated in thirty-plus years. Um, these are our current land development regulations, and they are very, very old. They are very, very old. I think they're on a time printer, actually. That's all that they are. So, um, Jean's been talking about getting these updated for us for a long time. As you know, we're updating our comp plan to this point. We are working still with North Central Florida Regional Planning Council on getting that portion updated, but Jean will be helping with the, um, LDRs. And the reason that this is really such a big deal is kind of also to Elijah's point, is a lot of what we have in place for our LDRs and the, and the planning around this is just, we don't have a lot of plans in place. Um, this is, planning is not my background. So when something comes before me, I kind of flail a little bit. I'll reach out to, to Jean, I'll reach out to, um, Safe Built, and, you know, figure out what the process is. And, and developers know that. They know that we don't have a really solid plan. So when they come in here, they know that they're going to kind of, you know, do what they want because we just don't have something really solid in place. So again, that's kind of why we're working with Jean to try to make sure that we get ahead of the curve. So when they're, developers want to come in here to leave everything, you know, up front. So that's a little tiny, Jean, but take it away.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to be in Bronson. I spent a number of years in Gainesville. So I'm a little familiar with the area, right? And these days, I live in Sarasota. But I, I've been working, uh, with, uh, your town manager for several months. She gave you a little bit of background in that. Uh, I'm a professional planner. I've been doing this for a long time. And, uh, one of the, my particular interest in, in things that I do at, uh, at this stage in my career is working with a lot of small communities. And working well with their, with plans, with codes, and so forth. But particularly in making them useful, understandable, and efficient uh, in a small community context, where you have limited staff and so forth, and probably not a, a, a large number of cases, but when you have them, they're very important. Let me point out that it, there's already been some discussion about comprehensive plans, TV plans, and so forth. Those revisions, they're very important. I think you're updating your, you are updating your comprehensive plan. Uh, and I've reviewed, uh, the, the work, uh, the, what's in the process. Uh, the land development code is required by our executive, as is a comprehensive plan. The land development code, it implements the comprehensive plan. Uh, it must be consistent with the plan. And so it is, uh, and let me simply say, there are some changes in your comprehensive plan that are proposed for you that I, I think are, are, are good changes to be made. And the, uh, uh, revisions I'm suggesting here would be consistent with them, so that's, uh, that's essentially a requirement, and it's no issue in terms of doing it. Uh, what I'm primarily recommending to you is a reorganization of your code that focuses on how decisions get made and creating an efficient process, uh, for doing that. Uh, when I began involved a few months ago, uh, you were out in the RV park issue. Uh, and it was very confusing in terms of what the actual status of that private was and how the process worked and so forth. That's not necessary. It's very important, you know, as whatever development, whatever your vision is, you're going to become much more likely to implement if you have an understandable plan. And the, uh, understandable codes. The codes that you have were adopted, well, they've been modified, but it, but essentially, they are products of the early nineties. There's an awful lot of information and working in rural region, those codes is unnecessary. Uh, a land development code essentially is a reference document. When someone comes into the process, they, they're asking one of two questions. I own a piece of land, I want to know how to use it. Or I've got to use it, I want to know where to put it. And the whole concept of a code is answer that question and give you an opportunity to, to make the decisions that are important. Uh, the, I gave, uh, provided a, uh, contract, which is, it just is implementing, right? But the important thing is the scope of work. And what I'm proposing to, to you there essentially focuses on the decision-making process and how that, how that works. Uh, and, and who the decision-makers are and how the process works. And there is nothing in the, in the land development code that I'm recommending that would change the way the code works or applies to any particular property. You, to do that, you need to do data analysis and public input and so forth if you're, if you're changing standards. But what we're talking about here is, is modifying the way the decision is made or clarifying. And, uh, creating a predictable process. Uh, what the, uh, this revision of the code will allow you to see the, the regulations that you use frequently, easily or easily, as you go through the process. Uh, and create some predictability and consistency. I can tell you from years of experience in this, if you want to encourage development or whatever, uh, result you want to see, predictability and consistency in the code is true. And that's what you don't have today. And what I would propose, uh, in the, uh, in this modification, uh, to create. Uh, when, when it comes to actually modifying the standards, when you reorganize the code, you can easily see where that change would then be made and how, how it actually kind of comes. Uh, right now, that would, that's very difficult to do on that working. Uh, you know, I didn't provide any recommendations regarding the focus of the RV park or handle, but what was its status? Go back and do considerable research to begin to understand exactly what it's that, I'm misusing that, as to be fair. Uh, and, and that created a lot of confusion and so forth. So the, the approach that I'm recommending, uh, that you do when you, it's adopted, would make the process much more understandable, much more consistent and predictable in terms of results that you're likely to see. Uh, I provided a scope of thermos to you that, that, uh, defines typically what we are talking about doing. I, I don't, uh, necessarily need to get into a lot of detail, but basically, it's clarifying the authority procedures, the small aid procedures, uh, and, uh, the, uh, and then streamlining procedures of that, that we confuse. I, and our proposal, and basically, the main proposal this will be done, essentially, the draft will be completed, uh, in, uh, this month and anticipated in the adoption and review process that the county wants to, to approve. So that's essentially, uh, what I, what I provided for you. Uh, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding, uh, the proposal and, and, and what we did.
Did you happen to bring your one from Horseshoe Beach?
I'm sorry?
Did you bring your one from Horseshoe Beach with you? Is it...
I didn't bring it with me. Well, I actually, my computer.
Okay, go on.
But let me, let me use that as an example. Horseshoe Beach, of course, it's just up the road from you. Uh, we, we actually adopted a new code for them in, in, I think, on May fourth of last year, and the hurricane hit in August. Uh, we're now doing rebuilding strategies for Horseshoe Beach. You may be aware that it was very severely damaged. Uh, and fortunately, we had, had clarified the, the code because the code that they had was almost unusable. And in fact, I, I don't want to get into a, a lot of war stories here, but essentially, ninety, no, something like eighty percent of property were non-conforming under the code. That's ridiculous. And that, this is simply that, you, you, when you looked at the code or you looked at the community, you didn't, it wasn't even clear that they were the same place. Now, that's an extreme example. You don't have that here, but, uh, that's the, the kind of problem that you potentially get into, uh, when you have codes that were created essentially thirty years ago. And, and having a lot of information, a lot of language that you don't use very often. It's, it may be needed, but only on occasion. But that, but those provisions that you need frequently need to be very straightforward, very as stated as, uh, and as clear, with what clarity is possible in order to, particularly, to work in a small community, uh, as you move through your process. So that will be the, uh, the, uh, again, Horseshoe Beach was an, an example of that. Or we literally, the part, portions of that they use is, is probably ten percent of all the volumes there. You need those other provisions, which you don't refer to very often and so forth, and we, we, that's, we tried to do the same thing here. So the provisions that you use are very clear and easily understood, uh, in, in the decision-making process.
Let me put my two cents in from a lawyer's point of view, having worked or tried to work with the LVR. I don't know when it was done, but it comes out of a cookie cup cutter shop. It wasn't constructed for Bronson. It was just constructed. It's generic. It's full of references and boards and bodies that we don't have. And in Bronson, I'm sure, over the long haul, we would like to see good, solid development. And as the gentleman just said, if they're going to try to guide themselves as to how to go about it procedurally from the LVR that we now have, they're either going to say one of two things. Number one, can't do it, let's go somewhere else. Or number two, we can get away with anything because it's impossible to read and understand what's going on here. So he used three words that I find very, very important. He said he wants it to be useful, understandable, and efficient. Right now, it is none of those things. And if, if there's going to be a cleanup process, get rid of all the terminology that applies in Miami and Jacksonville. And, no, seriously. And not me. You know, boards, exotic boards and bodies that we can't even think about. And get down to the fundamentals. I mean, simple things like when this notice we're joining property owners have to be given, you know? Who is functioning, is what board? As you know, from these small municipalities, the council is almost every board, planning agency, a zoning board, blah, blah, blah. Uh, and, and if that is clarified and projected accurately in, in an LVR that we have, it's going to be a hell of an advantage in dealing with development that comes down the pike in the future. That I can tell you.
That's, I can't state the message any better. Uh, and, uh, this is, the, the models I use have been developed over a long years. And actually, I was planning to recognize it for a county and I have two hundred people. But what we learned in a, in a very complex, um, situation like this, you can apply the principles at a community like yours very efficiently. Because in that situation, we had to be efficient because of the volume of people we had to build. In a small community, you don't have those kinds of resources. But principles still apply. And that's, that's essentially what we're proposing to do for you here.
Well, there's no doubt about it. We've been trending one of the years, years, years. You're just getting by, is what we had to work with. I go back to something you spoke about a year ago, whenever our, our plan came out for our comprehensive plan. And I was, I was on that original board and, in the nineties. Uh, when it came about, and just like you said, the cookie cutters. When we got our report out, it had reference to not the town of Bronson. But it had another community, and I'm not going to mention that name, was in, in plenty in that situation. And it was very embarrassing to the people that presented that nine, of course. And I said, this is what we have paid, all this state money. Of course, they give us the money, you know, to, to do this thing. And what was very discouraging to me at that time was they came to us and they said, okay, you have to produce a comp plan, okay? It's going to be yours. You're going to sign off on it. You're going to present it to the state. You're going to do all this stuff. We're going to give you the money, but here's the guidelines because you have to follow in these things. This is what you have to do. And I said, that's not our comp plan. That's the state of Florida's comp plan. You just want us to sign off on it? Is that what you're telling me? No, sir, you misunderstood me. I said, no, yeah, I, I understand you very carefully, very well. Uh, we lived a long deal, so to say. But that's what we did. So, you know, we had, we had to produce a comp plan. There was no doubt about it. And it was done. We had to hire, we had the money. They give us the money to do it. So we just, as they say back then, we just went along with the sentence. We didn't have to have a fire department or whatever. Anyway, that's just what we thought. Yes, I agree one hundred percent with yourself.
I have no chance, if, if you're going to ask me to look at the gentleman's contract. So I would want to look at it before you step aside, but, uh, you're probably need to discuss.
All right?
Anybody else?
Tom? Accept the contract upon approval, Mr. Warren Green. Make a motion to accept the contract with professional services, or, for professional services with building local communities, um, upon approval from Mr. Warren Green.
Thinking. We have a motion in a second. Uh, Franklin, do you have anything to say?
All right, uh, without objection.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Franklin.
I appreciate it.
And I think I will part my tribute.
Yes, sir, we love you so much.
Be careful. All right, next up is our engagement letter with Purvis and Gray. Purvis and Gray is our auditing firm. So just give you a little bit of information. So last year, their fee in their engagement letter was twenty-eight thousand five hundred. This year, it's thirty-one thousand three hundred and fifty, which is a ten percent increase. Last year's increase was nine percent over the previous year. The federal single audit, if applicable, which I don't think we leave one, but that increased from thirty-eight hundred to four thousand this year. And the state single audit, same thing, thirty-eight hundred to four thousand this year. In twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, the town spent thirty-six thousand one hundred dollars with Purvis and Gray, which is obviously more than what they originally quoted, but again, they did a lot of work. So that's where I'm from, is gray.
You want to set that or anything, that's just a, just a report.
I would go ahead, no, we go ahead and do it.
Make a motion to accept Purvis and Gray's engagement letter.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Without objection, motion carries.
All right, next up is the engagement letter with British and White. This would be our, I think, the British and White, British and White?
Second, because we started off with one, British and White.
With British and White. So this, again, this is our accounting fees, financial statements, accounting records, schedules, annual financial reports due to the state. Last year, they gave us a range of thirteen thousand eight hundred to twenty-three thousand. This year, the range is twenty thousand to twenty-nine thousand. It is a large increase, however, in twenty-two, twenty-three, we spent twenty-three thousand, which was exactly the top of their range. So I would anticipate, you know, it would not be more than the twenty-nine thousand. Purvis and Gray is sort of grayer than British and White. What they said in their email is that they're getting used to what. British and White is also a auditing firm, like Purvis Gray, and they always say to us that they require less as auditors than what Purvis Gray asks for. So they're kind of getting used to now needing to give them more information. So hopefully, it won't be so bad this year. But it's been, it has been rough the last few years, I'll be honest with you. We're hoping to have the audit done a lot sooner than the last two years, so. And I agree to.
Just a question. So eventually, British and White end up doing it all, won't have Purvis?
No, you still have to have both, they have to be a check and balance on each other. It's just that British and White happens to be in an auditing firm, they both.
That's why I'm saying they're other part of the company, because you, well.
You can't have, yeah, you have them separate.
So you still gonna be paying sixty thousand dollars for the two?
Yep. I'm totally like, I know, I'm, I agree.
All right.
Make a motion to accept the British and White.
Second. Motion in a second, without objection, motion carries.
All right, the next item, this is really just for discussion. So somebody came to me from Department of Children and Families. They're looking to lease space for their family safety child investigations division. They were just asking if we had any space in Bronson. They need five thousand square feet, they're open, normal working hours, eight to five. And then if investigators get calls at night, they would need access to the building at night. I didn't know of anything, but I thought I would just kick it to you guys in the event that you guys know anything that I could recommend. I did talk to Councilor Schuler, Councilwoman Schuler, today. She said that maybe the county, that the county might have something.
County's going to sell bigger building, they can talk, ask them about that.
I guess that's an option, maybe. It's five thousand square.
Yeah, it's not five thousand square. It's not five thousand square. But, show them the core. Not fifty, five thousand square, it's huge.
Yeah, I know, it's really not.
It's about the size of a public.
Yeah. On a Newberry, on a Newberry, fifty-five thousand square.
Is how big?
Fifty-five thousand square.
It is a bit more like, that was, public, more. What, they slaughtering cattle there?
What, the public sits? Why?
It is, there should be the largest.
Oh, that's gotta be five thousand square.
The public sits one in the Newberry, it's the largest in.
Oh, yeah, it's the largest.
That's huge.
They gonna make it like a Walmart type thing, you gonna be able to get some towels and the bed sheets, okay? I'm joking, please.
They'll be over twenty-four seven.
That's great, yeah, that's huge. We had one in Boca, like, was it fifty-five thousand?
I don't like that, the big building is not that big. Plus, they wanted to rent out part of the old high school, too. And I would rent out part of the annex. Yeah, that's pretty, pretty big. We have a lot of your buildings, I know the county's got.
All right, last up on mine is just, there's a copy of the winter edition of the quarterly newsletter in your packet. We don't have any interns at the moment, so it is being printed and mailed out by the print shop in Chiefland. It's going out Wednesday of this week, so you guys should have it carefully by the end of the week. We've got lots and lots of pictures at this time, so. And that's it, that's all I got.
All right, Chris, come up here and talk to us.
Did I call y'all on the phone? Just a couple of things briefly. The first thing, environmental, investment, micro inspection, library. I talked to some of the workers today. Their supervisor coming in tomorrow, who will walk through, check the ceiling, the wall, all the things to be repaired, to see if this deal, I'll be with them for that. That's tomorrow. Second thing, a quote from Bronson, yeah, we had got a quote, Sue shared it for like a hundred and ten thousand dollars for a water line. When I was asked to do this, before they paved the road, if we could just run pipe, you know, from one side to the other, not connect to any water main or anything. So that's there, when we get ready to connect the water, that the pipe under the road is already there. So they sent another quote, today I talked to this, the tenant, about the guilt destruction. And she sent over a quote, like thirty-five hundred dollars for the pipe, and to go ahead and lay it under the road, pay it.
And that's all you want, that's, that's.
Well, this is, you know, for the future, it wouldn't, you know, home to build, we need to get water there. We don't have to spend the money, we do the roads, we can spend the time into what we're doing. And there is another way, I talked to them about maybe just putting a sleeve up under the road, and then we just run the pipe through the sleeve. I didn't get a price on that yet, but, you know, these are some options that, where most of the time, you get ready to install a water, a water here, the main is on the other side of the road, so you got to cut out the road. So with this construction, what it's costing, if we go ahead and lay the pipe, and then we connect, the water main is on twenty-seventh, on the left end, I guess it'll be the south, northbound lane. So to come across would be easy to connect the water there to the pipe under the road, so that if anybody else want water, that eventually, if the town see fit, that we can go from Wilson Avenue all the way to School Street, and connect with the water main that ends where the city property ends on School Street. So we have a whole moving system there to get water.
So Chris, what are the differences on her quote that she gave you today? It says A and B, thirty-nine seventy-six versus thirty-two ninety-eight. Can you spell it for us? A says provide pipe section as described above with M J K.
Yes, that's what kids, make a little kid go in and install it, it has to be two joints, and go ahead and put the label to bring the two pipes together under the road.
Okay. And then she's got the second one, provide pipe section as described above with fabric and tape cover on each end of pipe.
Right, that's where the pipe would be, both ends of the pipe that would run under the road, both left pieces of pipe would have a cover, so nothing can get into it. So when we get ready to extend the water line, that we don't have to worry about anything being there.
So do you have preferences of which one you want to do?
No.
There's a lot of, they get, there's a lot of problems.
Yeah, it's going to cover, and, you know, it's something that we looking in the future to put water there. I mean, the, the place where they just cleared all the land, that what they was going to put a storage unit or something before, they gonna want water. You've got a lot of lots that's, you know, from, from that point till you get to the curb, there's probably three lots there on the left-hand side that those people are going to want water. Once you get around the curb, you have dudes that live there, and then you got several other houses across the road. They already have, most of the houses there, they have a well. But in the future, you know, they never know, they might want to hook up the water, and they already have the pipes there. So, and this is something that, you know, why we have the opportunity with the vacant lots, that if we go ahead, we decide to run, go ahead and put the pipe in that is already there, it'll save you money by going in here to put the pipe under the road now, instead of waiting to get the material, cut the pipe out and have it all done.
And I suggest, we talked about this during the week, about playing, I put some time, either that or put conduit or something underneath there, where you run the pipe through it, and then you're ready to put it in. Either way, it serves the same purpose, the fact is, just keep the journey that way. And that's, that's where it gets expensive. And so, if we can do that on the front side, and save us down the road, that's, that's, that's where we get it. I, I don't know what I'd go ahead and establish the pipe. She's talking about put, go ahead and put the pipe down.
Put the pipe down and cap it off.
Cap it off.
Or we could put a sleeve, cap the skins off, and then we regulate pipe, just push the pipe through the sleeves.
Whichever ways you use for your job. But I won't, took one, almost, I mean, how many, how many places did you have in the residence?
Yeah, we potentially have water on Wilson Avenue.
Six.
Yeah, probably six, that's on our, on what we're paying.
But we got to make a decision pretty quickly because they're, they're moving.
Right, yeah. So, go to the couch.
I think this will save us a lot of money in the future.
Yeah.
I can look into what the sleeves would cost, you know, it'll serve the same purpose.
Is it the same sleeve that you, that you use for like Corrigan type, or is it a little bit stiffer?
It's a little bit stiffer, it's something more durable than that.
Yeah, okay. How is it that? Would that be less expensive?
Yes, the sleeve would be less expensive.
So you want to be less, motion just have it not to exceed thirty-nine seventy-six, not to exceed thirty-two ninety-eight? Just so we can let her do it? I don't want to wait another two minutes.
We, we, we got to.
Thirty-nine seventy-six.
Do you want to?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the pipe and sleeve and everything for Warren, Wilson Avenue.
Do you have any questions?
To not exceed four thousand dollars.
Franklin, you got anything to say on this?
Yeah, I have here, I'm good.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second, without objection, motion carries.
Chris, can you just go back for just one second? Can you go back to the end of the, the microbial report from the testing company? I don't know if anybody in the council actually read this, but I actually did read it today. So I just wanted to see what it said at the end. There's a lot of pictures in here about, you know, the reconstruction, what they did, and the air quality and all that stuff. But at the very end, I think it was the second to the last page, it says precautionary mold treatment is recommended. Did you talk to them at all about what they're talking about here?
No, but they, my understanding, they treated it. That was part of the.
So was this done prior to the reconstruction?
Yeah, that was done prior, remember when they came in and that was a part of it?
Okay, I just want to be sure, because when I saw that, I was like, wait, didn't we just do all of this?
Yeah, that's when the extra came in for the treatment.
Okay, so they would have another report now when it's done. They'll say, there's nothing else that can happen, that's our assumption, right?
That's my assumption.
Okay, so make it sure.
See something?
I think they're focusing on the Shandery.
But I think that was one of the processes, where they said that we could do it, or they said that we are not qualified to do it, and we need something saying that it was done professionally. If anything came back, it would come back to them, not us.
Got it.
Okay.
When is the, when is, when are they supposed to start carrying the roof up down here? And then they just say it's.
Pretty soon, so the next, like, weekend, they'll probably be coming to town.
We need to talk to them about our project.
Yeah.
To see if that's available. And we reroute the water, break that back out to the fire station, correct you. Then we're going to be getting the water from.
Still want to fix the hydrant, have to fix that.
Hydrant's over.
Yeah.
All right.
Real water, the lobby's on it.
That was all, if we were doing a hundred thousand, don't worry about it. That's what we were doing, I'll take four, put a hundred and ten thousand, so we're good.
You okay? You?
Does he have this recorded? Calls we had? This is, wishes for the month, January, and August for the year. Had a hundred and fourteen calls. Roughly eight percent of those were for first aid related, including vehicle accidents. We did have one building fire, and mobile home fire, car fire, and some, just a few other little things. That averages three point eight calls per day, which is roughly what we have been doing. And it would come out to thirteen hundred and fifty for the year. Some days, it's a, it's, yeah, I would expect during the winter to have more calls than some, but it kind of stays the same throughout the year, so, based on, it's interesting, based on the population, it doesn't increase that much. So, that's all I got for the report.
I'd like to make a statement.
Okay.
Paul. Sorry, y'all may or may not, sorry, everybody here does. Saturday was a week ago, I had to call these guys from my house. And I want you to know, it's nice to, when you make that phone call, they're there within five minutes. By the time I made the phone call, I was beginning to wonder how you got in the house, to be perfectly honest with you. But I appreciate it, I appreciate it, and they were there. Professionalism that was conducted that day was very, was spot on. And I appreciate it, baby. Just go on.
I think I have to just do my day-to-day, whatever is required.
Okay, all right. Well, Purvis and Sticks, don't we open? Things good with us on the water, Barbara, we did have a little shutdown during the week. What's the cause of?
I have one thing to add. We got the flag from Danny George, the general manager of Subfloor Electric Company in November sixteen. And we put it up in the station, it's inside the station, inside the training room that we had. So if you may have a phone call there, we'll try to get a picture for the next newsletter.
Good, very good, very good. Like I said, we did have a little, but that's part of doing business, so. I got several phone calls, and I said, ah, don't worry about it, it'll come back, it'll be all right, it'll get it back up, so. That's the, the world we live in today, you know, if you're going to be in business, or if you're going to be doing things, you're going to have problems occasionally, and those things are expected, so. That's the way it goes. But I'm getting them on the job they're doing, I think everything's running real smooth. I agree, I, the guys that we got in place are doing a good job, and if they don't want the job they're doing, now we could just shut down all this vandalism that's going on, but we're working on that, too. Do you, I was going to call you today about that. Do you have any expectations of when we might get everything back, there's some type of normality out there?
Just want to get the, get the go-ahead to purchase some more toilets and.
Okay.
That's the biggest issue right now.
Purchase more toilets.
Is that something we could find reference for?
Nah. Nah, it's just a change, like, this area, maybe, uh.
And the sad part about it, they, you know, when they did what they did, they knew, you know, by cranking the toilets at the bottom, that it would destroy it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
There's no, uh, insurance for malicious mischief?
They cost, they're like.
Dollar dogging, uh, two thousand dollars, or something.
Part of labor.
Probably, well, see, you want forty percent of rent, the dog lanes.
All right, Ms. Virginia?
Um, do we know, did, have they said anything about the sidewalks over there, um?
The one you.
Twenty-four?
No, is that not been repaired? Where did it?
Uh, if I'm twenty-four, I was walking and I noticed where they had.
Every equipment and.
That's exactly, you could see the tire marks.
Yeah, that's what happened to the water line, up there by the cemetery, you know?
Yeah, and I did see them go out there and look at it, like, yeah, they just haven't fixed it, but I, I did wanna ask, there's another part of the sidewalk that is on Pine Street, um, it's not busted, but it is completely covered with sand. Um, is there any kind of way that we could, like, get it clean off? Because I think that it's something that, I think that it was supposed to be higher than the road.
Gotcha.
But, um, that's not what happened.
Yeah, every time it rains, it's.
Yeah, so it might be something we have to get done, like, once a year, or something like that, but to me, there's no point in having it if it's a beach right there, you know?
We'll just call that as a courtesy, like, yeah, clean that up.
And they've been doing a great job.
Tom?
I'm good.
Tom?
You just need to prove, you need approval from her by the tools, or from us, is it over a certain amount?
No.
No, we just, we got.
All right, I was making sure.
We're, we're, we're doing this on purpose.
Yeah.
We're trying to make a statement right now.
We still need to shut, we still need to shut the gates at night, that's another, that's another issue.
Well, I know, but.
Um, nothing, I met with the DOT guy the other day about, not sign the fire station, me and Senator Rappert are tomorrow, we'll get, give a game, they pretty much told me there was one spot we could put it, that's our only option, so, I'm gonna show them where that's asked, so they can start a site, and get some sign of the fire station.
Gail, do you have something else, just here?
No.
Okay.
I do have a question that I forgot to ask.
What?
Um, if said, I'm just asking, if said, same line is approved, have we thought about a red light right there, or something?
On three thirty-seven and.
Yes.
It's, it's State Road, it has.
Oh, it's count, twenty-seven?
One, twenty-seven and three thirty-seven, they have to be on twenty-seven, we don't have a say in that.
Do you think they'll put one there?
They won't, they won't put one anywhere else in Bronson, they don't know where they're gonna put one there.
They wouldn't give us caution lights in front of the fire station, saying the fire trucks are coming out, so they definitely don't do that.
We have for years, B and I have booked this, tried to get one down here where the push office is, because of multiple, multiple car crashes.
There is, but with those, with the dump trucks pulling off that road, that's gonna be bad.
But the dump trucks do it already now, and they don't.
And B, what they told us, where we haven't had it now.
They did quite a few studies, you know, every few years, we would give a study done, and they come out, but say not enough traffic come through to warn the traffic, like, oh, that traffic's going straight through Williston, and they got about four.
I told them, I said, I said, you're lacking seven hundred cars a day in front of the fire station to get a flashing caution light.
They told me.
You just need to get a hundred people to try to do it sometime today. There's not enough deaths there, so.
I was saying how they, basically, same traffic, go, go to.
I was just asking, because, uh, there's nothing wrong with that question, by all I suppose, it's been asked for years and years.
Yep. Uh, is there anything else, Tom?
I think that's it.
Okay. Franklin? Frank?
Yeah?
You got anything?
Yeah, I got something, uh, you know, uh, we think they have a cemetery re-planting, uh, right now, I see, if there's no idea, you know, March to six, they have another cemetery meeting at three o'clock.
Okay.
March to six, uh, and, uh, I noticed that there's a lot of stumps and trees that are about four or five, I mean, stump that are four or five, and old trees as well now. Is there any way we can get that cleaned up at the cemetery, uh, and get maybe some of this stump grind down around up? Have you ever gone out and looked at it, too?
I haven't, but I can.
Some of them are right about one inch.
Yeah, we, um, we used to, we used a company recently to grind stumps by the library, so we've got somebody we can call for that. I'll just go look at it with Curtis.
I, I think several of them need to be cut down and then ground, it's over, they are standing up about four or five foot.
Did, uh, what, what kind did you?
Curtis, Curtis, right, you were completely, well, no.
Gotcha.
But, uh, we need to get that cleaned up, and then some trees as well now, that we need to get those cut up and moved out of the way, you know, to make it look better, you know? And, uh, and I noticed, uh, on the, uh, on the minutes that you had from the last meeting, that, uh, uh, is, is Ms. Virginia the vice mayor, or is she just, okay, I'll see.
Vice mayor.
Vice mayor. Uh, you can refer to, uh, the last man you just said.
You called.
Ms. Virginia.
Yeah, yeah, you called. I did.
I can change it, that's fine.
Okay, all right, that's all I got, bro.
All right, thank you.
I don't know, I, I don't know how to do it, maybe I have to go to the Commission of Ethics. Uh, I think at some point, the charter needs to be revised, where just as the people vote in council, they should vote in anybody that holds an office. Do you like to put you there?
He wants to vote for mayor or vice mayor.
And even, even you, and Sue, anything, anybody that holds an office.
Well, I don't hold it on this, I'm an employee, I'm not an officer.
Yes, well, you, you called Jeff and Courtney, right?
Yeah, but I'm just an employee.
All right, so I'll, I'll handle that, so remember last, last year, last year we did that? We had the Charter Review Committee, they made all the changes, Attorney Morin actually put them all together, so we have the charter, the revised charter, that needs to go on the ballot for next year, we couldn't get it, we didn't have enough time to get it on to the last election.
I have it now, where they tell you what your name is, you'll pick up.
So we have to put, and I think we started, I think Alexis did a lot of the work before, we, we put what the pre, the current charter is right now, what the new charter is, and then we show all the changes, like this was removed, this was added, you know, all of that. So Attorney Morin was putting all those changes together, and that's what's gonna go on the ballot for next year. So it will be voted on in April of next year, when we are in our next election. We already, it's done, we've got it, it's done, we did all the work. But as I recall, it's our goal, the council at the time, which is not this current council of the current, the last council that was looking at the charter, was not in favor of voting of having the electorate vote for mayor.
They were not, and it was.
And it was because of the resigned to rock issue, right? Right?
Yes.
It was discussed by a term.
It was discussed numerous times by service.
We figured out we'd have to add another council seat, that's a strong mayor.
Yeah, that's what you're gonna have to do, if you're gonna have a mayor board on, you're gonna have to add another seat.
Add another council seat, now, strong mayor.
Position is.
Three of us resign right now to run for mayor, and that thing, no business gets done.
You can't pay bills, you can't pay checks, you can't pay anything.
Well, I'm gonna be here, rain, sleet, or snow. That's not what I'm talking about.
No, you're talking about the mayor and the vice mayor, and the people.
No, what I'm talking about, the people of Bronson, like, the way they died up there.
He wants Bronson residents to be able to vote for me, for Sue, for Curtis, for Celeste, for Russell, every single city.
No, no, I.
That's what you just told me. Yep, I'm, I'm no different from Curtis and Russell, I'm not an officer. I'm not an officer, what, what do you?
I, I give those things, that, that.
Good luck.
I give them, I give.
All right, with, uh, anybody else? Yeah, I got just a second.
We have to change the new bills. Motion to pay the bills.
Oh, oh, with the, with the bills, um, there was a couple of checks for zero dollars and.
That's because they got voided.
Okay, well, the one that, for Molly Maids, did not say it got voided.
It was Molly Maids.
Uh, not Molly Maids, Lady and Shay.
Does it have?
Maybe it needs to get voided.
I think it did get voided after I printed those.
Okay.
Because I had to recut the check.
So you, I signed one, and you voided and?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's probably what it was.
Okay.
All right.
But I'll double check tomorrow.
All right, we have a motion and a second without objection. I need to, I need to, leave the jury.